Good afternoon, and our city commission meeting for March 12th will come to order. City Clerk, would you call the roll? I am sitting in for the city clerk tonight.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Okay, our invocation tonight, I've asked Don Barger, and he's graciously accepted that honor, so Don will be doing the invocation, and then I have a special guest that's going to help us with the pledge of allegiance. Kaky, Shadoon.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we pause a moment in our busy day to offer our thanks to you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us gathered here. You have given us this great land as our heritage. Bless our land with honest industry, sound learning, and an honorable way of life. Make us who come from many nations with many different languages a united people. We offer prayers for our world this evening. Where there is conflict, bring peace. Where there is uncertainty and anxiousness, bring inner quiet. Where there is hatred, bring understanding and love. Where there is the terror of war, bring change to people's hearts. Bless the men and women in our armed services. Guard those who risk themselves in battle for their country this day. Protect them, we pray, and enable them to do their duty with wisdom and compassion. Though they must be at war, let them live in peace, as eager for agreement as for victory. Encourage them as they courage one another. Bless our nation, oh God, not only with abundance, but with wisdom and leadership and generosity. Quiet in among us the partisan spirit that seems so paralyzing. Enable us to use our differences creatively for the common good. Bless our president and congress and their interactions with the world community. We ask special prayers for all who suffer, the discouraged, the lonely, the depressed, and the grieving. May your grace and peace touch their lives and give them rest. Loving God, we also ask blessing on those who hold office in the governments of this city and county, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and for the common good of all. We ask all of this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. And I'm sorry, Libby, not Kaky. I don't know why I keep channeling your sister tonight. Would you like to come up here and help us lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Libby, thank you for helping us tonight. City manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
And I would just like to say before we go any farther that our friend and coworker, Teresa White, went home on March the 4th, and we attended a celebration of her life today. She will be missed until we all meet her again, and I just want to say a special thanks to Tammy and to Mayor Paxton for the eulogy that they said for Teresa today. It was a lovely service. All right. Our presentation tonight is Civic Beautification Dogwood Trail. Is Mr. Barber here?
I don't see him. I don't either.
Who's it?
Henry Barber.
Okay.
I don't see Mr. Barber here.
Okay, I guess we'll move on. If he comes in a little bit later, we'll bring him up to the podium. Commissioner Abraham, you have our minutes.
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for February 26, 2013, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to appointments now. Motion to approve appointees for the Paducah Renaissance Advisory Board. I move that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky -- that's not right.
It's that whole thing.
Okay, so I say it just like that. I move that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky approve Mayor Kayler's recommended appointments to the PRA Board in accordance with the City Ordinance Number 2013-28015, which provides that 15-member board will be filled by the mayor with the consent of the majority of the city commission. I move that the following individuals be appointed as members of the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Board for a term which to expire on the date of December 1, 2013, Maury McGarvey, Rose Marie Steele, and Lily Rivera. I move that the following individuals be appointed as members of the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Board for a term to expire on December 1, 2014, Bob Hopper, Landy Bryant, Darlene Mazone, Sarah Forker, and Samuel Snacks Hawkins. I move that the following individuals be appointed as members of the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Board for a term to expire on December 1, 2015, Kevin McEwen, Jordan Brown, and Randy Davis. I move that the following individuals be appointed as members of the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Board for a term to expire on December 1, 2016, Sharon Poet, Juliette Grumley, John Hasagawa, and Ashley Wright.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing the following as members to the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board, Maury McGarvey, Rose Marie Steele, Lily Rivera, Bob Hopper, Landy Bryant, Darlene Mazone, Sarah Forker, Samuel Snacks Hawkins, Kevin McEwen, Jordan Brown, Randy Davis, Sharon Poet, Juliette Grumley, John Hasagawa, and Ashley Wright.
Second.
All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Just want to thank all these people for serving on this board. It's an all-volunteer board, and they give of their time, so we appreciate the time that they spend for us. I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Paducah Supporting the Submission of an Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds to Assist the Paducah Economic Development Corporation in the Recruitment Efforts for an Industrial Prospect," be adopted. All right. The community development block grant that we're talking about is between us and the McCracken County Fiscal Court, and it will be submitting a CDBG grant ED application for approximately $2 million to assist Paducah economic development and support an industrial business locating a new operation in the City of Paducah in McCracken County. McCracken County voted on this last night. Is there any discussion?
We do have some gentlemen in the audience, if there are any questions. Chuck, can you speak to this if there are?
Any questions for Chuck? All right.
No. I believe I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, if there's no discussion, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. We have the -- I move the following documents be received and filed. Documents: Certificates of Insurance, ANK Construction, Mertco Incorporated, Certificate of Insurance and Right-of-Way Bond for Ray Blackinson Incorporated, Number Two, Contracts and Agreements, Amendment to the -- between the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the City for Greenway Trail Phase One, Ordinance 2013-1-8008, Agreement with Kentucky Division of Emergency Management for Grant Award to Purchase Generator for Fire Station Number One, Ordinance 2012-10-7983, 2012 Home Funding Agreement with Kentucky Housing Corporation for Seven Homes in the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood, 2012-7-7952, Quit Claim Deed for Property for Alley Closing on a Portion of Lindsay Street, a Portion of a 15-wide alley, an 18-foot alley being located between North 20th and North 21st Street and north of Park Avenue, 2009-8-7602, Deed with Julian Rose for 833 South Fifth Street, MO #1704, Cancel of Notice for City Commission Meeting on March 5, 2013, Bids: Park Service Department, Noble Park Pool Renovation Project Phase Three Spray Pad, Mertco, Wilkins Construction, Midstates Construction Incorporated, Engineering Public Works Department, Two Triple Combinations Pumper Trucks, Fire Department and Fire Department Service and Supply Vendor, Covadage Mobile Equipment Corporation Manufacturer, Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company Vendor, Pierce Manufacturing Company. I believe that's it.
Second.
Any questions? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Second.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Seconded.
Hi Cindy.
Hi.
Looks like we have a few changes.
We do. We have pretty self-explanatory changes this evening. One of those is the status change for Teresa White, who had a very befitting ongoing celebration this afternoon.
It was lovely.
It was.
All right. Any discussion? City manager, do you have anything to say?
I think the next meeting or so, the chief expects to bring these new hires forward, introduce to you all. Trying to get that arranged.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a 2013-2014 Kentucky Household Hazard Waste Grant application and all documents necessary through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management in the amount of $27,000 to assist in funding the city-county annual cleanup day be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
This is the 24th year for the grant application. It's pretty much the same as in past years. It's a 50/50 cash match from the city and the county towards the application.
And we do this every year?
Every year. Last year, I think we did 720 or so residences were served, city and county residents.
Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a 2013-2014 Kentucky Pride Recycling Grant application and all documents necessary through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for funding to purchase various recycling equipment for the volunteer-operated recycling drop-off center located at 1851 North 8th Street be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
This is a $75,000 grant for new equipment at the facility on North 8th Street. More specific, they're planning on purchasing 12 large metal bins, one metal sorter, four retainers, the retainers are the containers that you see at various locations around the city, and then for some education and advertising.
Is this the same one they passed last night at the county commission meeting?
I'm not sure, Mayor.
Is it, Mark? Well, I know there was a correction last night, so I didn't know if that was $65,000 instead of 75.
I thought that had been corrected to $65,000.
Right, so it's still here as 75, so we -- do you know, it can be up to 75?
That's the way the agenda request reads. The application, I don't think, has gone out at this point, so I'll certainly check on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Mark?
Just a simple statement that at its core, Recycle Now is still a nonprofit organization managed by a group of volunteers. Many of these volunteers have been with this program since our first event in 2007, and I simply want to say thank you to Mayor Kayler and the commissioners for the support of this program, and we look forward someday to curbside recycling in Paducah.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
All right. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application and all documents necessary for a reimbursement grant in the amount up to $20,000 through the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for a 2013-2014 law enforcement service fee grant for the Paducah Police Department to operate a one-year DUI enforcement program be adopted.
Assistant chief?
Mayor, commissioners, city manager, thank you all. This is our annual grant application. Like you read, it is for DUI enforcement. There are a couple, three pieces of equipment put in there. The only match in the grant is for the equipment purpose at 50%.
All right, sounds good. Any discussion on this? All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing execution of a deed of correction between the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks, DBA Paducah Water, successor and interest to Redland Water District, and Schrader Publishing Company, Inc., be adopted.
Second.
All right, this was just some property that was left over. It really didn't benefit anyone but the adjacent property owners, so it's pretty simple. Any discussion on it? All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to our ordinances for adoption, and we've read these before, so they'll be brief. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents related thereto with the Kentucky League of Cities for a 2013 matching safety grant award. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky League of Cities for the 2013 matching safety grant award that will reimburse the city $6,000 for the purchase of playground and safety equipment for the Paducah Park Services Department. The matching funds of $6,000 will be provided through the park services budget.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this? All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment for the purchase of fire structural turnout gear for use by the Fire Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby accepts the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment for the purchase of fire structural turnout gear at the unit price of $1,100 per set for the use of the Fire Department. Further, the City authorizes the mayor to execute the agreement with Bluegrass for the remaining portion of the 2013 fiscal year and 2014 fiscal year. This agreement contains a one-year option to renew for the 2015 fiscal year.
Second.
All right, any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Change Order Number One with Wilkins Construction Company Incorporated for the City of Paducah's Greenway Trail Phase One project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute Change Order Number One for an increase in the amount of $21,459.92 with the Wilkins Construction Company Incorporated for the construction of the City of Paducah's Greenway Trail Phase One project to finalize the project, increasing the total cost of $565,218.92 and extending the time of completion to February 19, 2013.
Second.
All right, any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Ordinances introduction, and we do not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for property known as Greenway Village Subdivision Phase One, accepting dedication of right-of-way and public utility easements, establishing front yard setbacks, and authorizing the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat. This ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for property known as the Greenway Village Subdivision Phase One, accepting dedication of right-of-way and public utility easements, and establishing front yard setbacks. In addition, the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to subscribe a certificate approval on the plat.
Second.
Okay, Steve?
This is the approval process for Phase One subdivision. Approximately a year ago, the city commission approved a memorandum of understanding with Hickam Development Corporation that said, within one year, you need to come back to the city commission to get final subdivision approval, and then immediately following this, we'll do, we'll actually execute that infield development agreement. And Phase Two is supposed to come back to the city commission within five years, so this puts the first step forward.
So it's good to see they're moving along on that?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Mertco Incorporated for the Noble Park Pool Renovation Phase Three project and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Mertco Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $188,466 for the Noble Park Pool Renovation Phase Three project, which includes work for the construction of a spray pad and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Mark?
Yes, this is the third and final phase, bid phase, of the pool project. It's the spray pad phase that replaces the baby pool. We are, as we've worked through the project, if you remember, we took, well, actually some of y'all weren't on the commission at the time, we took initial bids, and by denying, by taking the first bid and not accepting it, we have gone back and bid, made it into three phases. With that, we've saved about $65,000, so that's a good thing. We've done the concession stand, we've done the main pool, and now this is the spray pad. Actually, we, after the bid is accepted, we'll be able to reduce this because we'll be able to make some of the main purchases through our purchasing capabilities and save the 6% interest on that, on taxing also. So that will actually reduce this down to about $184,000, so save another $4,500 on that.
Mark, are there any progress points with respect to the first two phases of the project you could share with the commission tonight?
Well, we're going to have our main meeting next week, but we have already taken the gutters off, and they have started redoing the new gutter system. They have cut the existing walls and put the new drain pipe in. We've already gone through the concession stand and taken the phase, and we've done our demolition on walls and removed an asbestos tank. All of those things have been taken care of at this point. It looks like that we're right on time as far as everything, as far as opening for the spring of this year, so.
What is the completion date?
We're looking at May 17th right now, and that's right on, we'll have, we're actually planning on having water in the pool and it circulating on May the 10th, but full completion on May the 17th. And right now, if all deliveries go with the spray ground, we'll be right in that timeframe also.
When do we normally open it?
We open, actually, for the past couple of years, we have been opening after school is out, in the first week in June. That was a cutback. This year, we're targeting Labor Day, Memorial Day weekend.
So that'll give you a little time to check it out and make--
Yes, we want it circulating and try to get some water warm in there, actually. But building and contractors, all of that coordination is being handled right now, and we'll have some updating, some pictures here in the next couple of weeks for you.
Good. Kids will enjoy that this summer.
I think it's going to be really a fun experience.
And maybe a few adults.
Maybe a few.
Be some meeting from the pool.
Okay, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Article III Vehicles Drawn by Animals of Chapter 122, Vehicles for Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby amends permit section of the ordinance regulating vehicles drawn by animals.
Second.
Little history on the animal-drawn carriage ordinance. It was first established in 1992. We're actually getting closer back to the way it originally was in a permit issue. In around 2001, 2002, between that time and 2004, we went to a sole, basically a sole source, non, we had, we're supposed to bid the carriage or carriages out every three years. This has never been done. So what we're creating is a situation where there can actually be some competition. There's probably not a whole lot out there, but all the people have to do is abide by the ordinance and apply for permits every year, just like we do other business licenses and everything else. They don't have to go through a bid process, and actually, one, after one three-year term, somebody could be out of business by the city just saying, no, we're going to accept somebody else's bid. So this will allow more than one carriage company out there, if there is such a thing, and if not, the person who's doing it, all they have to do is buy a license and abide by the ordinance.
Any discussion?
It's pretty self-explanatory.
All right, thanks, Mark.
I think we have the person of interest this year, who actually bought the Tom Irwin's business and barn and materials, and so Char--
Coming up. Now, are you all out near the Greenway Trail?
Yes ma'am.
All right, I saw you the other day when we were walking our dogs.
They bought the barn.
You all were there?
We thought we bought everything, and after talking to Mr. Thompson, I'm kind of in between a rock and a hard place. So I found out, I purchased my license, I, that was the first--
Business license.
Business license is what Tom told me to do, and then I got a phone call from Mr. Thompson telling me I also needed the permits. So now I own a barn, five carriages, three draft horses, and I don't have anywhere to drive them, so. Tom kind of misled me a little bit, so I'm hoping you all can help me out, and we do a wonderful job. The one comment I want to make to you, nice to meet you, by the way--
That's right. We've spoken on the phone several times.
My worry about opening up bids, you could get anybody to come in here and purchase a permit and go out and say they can drive a horse and carriage. That's not always the case.
Well, at least they do have to go by. We do have all the rules and regulations that they do have to go by, same as you do, as far as diapering and learning how to handle horses and all the--
I'll say diapering's the least of it, yeah.
The veterinarian and all those types of things, and have to have them inspected, so just like that.
It's not even inspecting the animals, it's having the knowledge and the skill to handle the horses in a crowd, having the proper horse to put in town. You don't want a farm horse to come in here and go downtown, and then, I don't want to build a business in Paducah and then have somebody possibly come in that thinks they can drive a carriage and have it run away and ruin it for everybody, hurt somebody in the meantime. I mean, that's my biggest concern. I've been doing this for years. It was my midlife crisis. I got into it. I drive everywhere. My horses are safe, safe. If they're not, they're not on the road. So, that's what you need to do. If you can find somebody to do a driving test, just like you drive a car. I mean, there are proper ways and equipment, 'cause I won't use any of Tom's equipment.
Well, we've talked about that. And there's a lot of those checks and balances in the ordinance that we have. So, we're looking forward to it. Again, I don't know how many horse and carriage folks that are interested out there. We wanted to price it so it was fair. And we've already actually done a month temporary or carriage license for Char, and hopefully, it'll work out, be a long-working relationship.
I hope so.
There we go.
I'm praying.
There you go.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. Diapers there. Hang on, let me. Let's do here. All right, I believe I'm gonna do about the fire truck. All right. I move, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company and Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated for Sale to the City of Two Triple Combination Pumper Trucks for Use by the Fire Department, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company and Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company as the vendor and Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated as the manufacturer in the amount of $863,588 for the sale to the City of Two Triple Combination Pumper Trucks for Use by the Fire Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. However, Pierce Manufacturing Company has proposed a deduction in the amount of $31,234 from the proposal price if the City makes 100% prepayment for the Triple Combination Pumper Truck upon contract acceptance. If the 100% payment is approved, the price of the new Triple Combination Pumper Truck would then be $832,354.
Second. Okay, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. This is a continuation of the fleet plan that you all put into place several years ago of a plan for us to replace the apparatus that we have currently. A little history about the apparatus that we have. They were all, the ones we have currently were all purchased at one time over about a year, year and a half period, back in 1993, 94, and 95. The entire fleet, all seven apparatus at once. That was a good deal at the time. The fleet that we had at the time was very aged, very mechanically deficient, and we were in serious need of an upgrade. So, the chief at the time got the commission to approve that. The downside to that was, is that now, 20 years later, all apparatus are wearing out roughly at the same time. And a few years ago, the commission at the time implemented, more than a few years ago, implemented a way for us to purchase apparatus over a period of time. We have, that's the fleet replacement plan that we use for the other general government vehicles, the fire, we call it Fire Fleet Trust with Finance Director 'cause it's kind of its own thing. But, we appropriate money every year to go into the trust fund to pay for the vehicles that we are purchasing. The vehicles that you see tonight before you are replacements for apparatus that we currently have in the fleet now. We're still running many of the 20-year-old apparatus. Matter of fact, we have not sold but one of the original seven that we've, that we've purchased back in the early 90s. That's, that was a ladder truck that we sold two years ago, and it brought $100,000. Little bit about fire trucks, they don't get traded in. They get disposed of through government surplus. Manufacturers are glad to build them and sell them to you, but they don't want them back after a period of time. So, there is a used fire truck market out there, and that's where you, that's where those are typically picked up off of gov deals or one of the used fire truck dealers have purchased them that way. We have not sold any of these pumpers that we currently have yet. When we purchase these two apparatus, that'll be the first time we're surplusing some of those vehicles, and we're unsure what they're gonna bring. The reserve truck that we sold a few years ago, that was a 1988 International Grumman, I think we figured out it brought $2,500 off of government surplus. So, we're hoping that the apparatus that we're gonna be surplusing now will bring more money than that to return to our trust fund. The deal you have before you now is for the purchase of two. This will leave us one pumper and one ladder truck that needs to be replaced in the, as the fleet plan projects, and we'll be selling two as we bring these two in. The deal additionally shows that we prepay the trucks, so that's something that we've worked out. The Finance Director has reviewed for us, and we take advantage of the reduced pricing as a result of the prepayment to go ahead and pay for the trucks and get them, get a better deal on the price. What other questions might you have?
Any questions?
On the funds that you're using, that's coming from the fleet fund that you have been putting into through the years to prepare for buying these trucks, right?
That is correct, yes.
That's what I thought, thank you.
I gotta ask you.
Okay.
On a 20-year-old fire truck, I mean, typically, how many miles are on these things?
Well, we don't look at it in terms of miles. The trucks that we have now, some of them had hour meters. By the time 1995 rolled around, you started to see some hour meters on them. They primarily miles before that. They range anywhere, most of them, from 81,000 to 101,000 miles. We've got one apparatus, it's got 8,600 hours on it. And think of it in terms of hours, 'cause that's what the trucks typically do. They're designed for, you know, we make responses in them, which is driving them, but when they get there, they pump or they idle. And that's where the real wear comes in. I would say all of those trucks range somewhere around the 7,500 to 8,500 hour mark, because they're all the same age and they've been in service all that time. And as Randy Krauts, the director of our fleet, could tell you, 8,600 hours on any motor is a lot of, or any component is a lot of hours, a lot of excessive wear. What we've seen is we've started to replace the trucks that our maintenance costs are starting to trend down. Back in 2008, fiscal year eight, we appropriated $154,000. And right now, we're at $73,000 for the year, just in maintenance cost. And when you're talking about a 20-year-old fire truck, that's a lot of maintenance cost you're appropriating to still have an old truck. And they have retirement criteria, you know, as long as the truck meets its, its tested criteria that we have to maintain on it on an annual basis. We, you've heard regulated death before, and that's another thing that we're regulated on to make sure it can perform at its rating. You know, once it can't do that, then we retire. It doesn't really matter what the age is of it, but we use the maintenance cost to drive when we project it should be replaced. And Randy and I spent considerable amount of time on this, oh, four years ago now, I think, of looking forward to what that mark should be. We don't believe it should be 20 years, because the truck's got excessive wear on it, and we don't believe it's gonna have much residual value as a result of that. So, we're hoping to turn them maybe a little quicker where we get more out of them while they still have something in them, and we don't have as much maintenance as we have in some of the trucks we have now. Just since 2004, as an example, life to date, just since 2004, because it was, it was tracked differently prior to 2004. Life to date on one of these trucks from that time's $137,000 in maintenance. So, they're very expensive out, and when a component goes down on them, it's not cheap. And as they get to the, when they approach the 15-year mark, then you have to wait for the manufacturer to make that part. You know, they're not gonna give it to you off the shelf. They've gotta, they send that part back down the production line for, to be manufactured and then sent to you. So, the trucks, not only is, do you have these cost, but you have the excessive downtime of the apparatus as well. We've had trucks be down anywhere from eight to 12 weeks or longer for that very reason, because of their, just because of their age. And while they may still look pretty, we do a good job of maintaining the outside of them. I'm very proud of that. But, the inside is a little bit different, a little bit different.
And Commissioner Wilson, your comment about, it comes out of the fleet fund. When did we start that, Rick?
1998.
So, you know, we started that fund to put money back so that we're not in a tight spot when we need a new fire truck or to replace the cars at the police department, or any of our cars.
Any of our, very good forward planning on our elected bodies' part to do that, because it allows us the benefit to take advantage of having those funds available to replace a piece of equipment before we're paying for it over and over and over again.
Pay it forward.
That's right.
All right, any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Abraham, did you have something you wanted to say? Because I forgot to ask for comments on C. We can go back to it if you had something you wanted to say.
The carriage?
I felt like you looked like you wanted to say something.
Well, yeah, I was looking at Section 122-74 regarding the drivers. And it talks about all drivers of animal-drawn vehicles who have a current automobile vehicle driver's license, be at least 18 years of age, and demonstrate competency in handling animal-drawn vehicles. I mean, who determines that competency?
At one, at one time, it was supposed to be the police department is supposed to do that. But, we'll have to take a look at that. That's one we'll need to amend that.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda important.
Right.
And the other one, the lady mentioned about the particular type of horse. I would think that that would be something that we need to look at, because if a horse is usually out in the, on the farm by him or herself, is that correct? And then, with some of the, some of the traffic that we have downtown on Saturday.
Certainly.
That could, that could be an issue. So, as we move forward, we need to make sure that we're on the right side of that.
We'll take that. And because there are actually more than just horses that people draw, if you go to St. Louis or if you go to New Orleans, there are not any horses out there in a lot of places.
We're talking about horses?
Well, that's why it says animal-drawn. It can be mules, it can be other things like that, too.
So, we need to make sure that the mule then has a-
Anything has to be able to be handled.
Has a temperament for folks.
Yes, that's right. Exactly, all of them, yeah, at that point.
You don't want anybody getting horse-bitten or mule-kicked or anything like that.
Or goat-ridden, or, exactly.
All right.
Any other comments? All right. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of One Timco Street Sweeper Model Number 600 for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay $180,756 for the purchase of One Timco Street Sweeper Model Number 600 to Stringfellow, Inc., for the City of Paducah EPW Street Division in Compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract, and Authorizes the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same.
Mayor Commission, this is an exact same situation with the street sweeper as the fire chief explained with your fire trucks. You have a 12-year-old street sweeper that he's replacing. Your maintenance costs are up, that sweeper's, again, we have two street sweepers that run, and this one that needs to be replaced.
And then, do you still have the little one?
Yes, we still, the sidewalk sweeper, yeah, we still have that. It's becoming more and more difficult to keep running.
The little one is?
Well, the parts are becoming more and more difficult to get for it and expensive. The last repair, I think, was around $20,000 on it.
Wow.
And it's a $75,000 piece of equipment, so you start looking at the need of that piece of equipment.
So, I bring looks even better. No, just kidding. Just wanted to bring some Albert in there.
Our newest, how old is our newest street sweeper?
Our newest street sweeper, Randy, do you have that?
2007.
Okay, so it's, okay.
Seven years, six years.
So, you really got these alternating maybe every six or seven years?
Correct.
Well, Rick, since there was only one bidder, how did you pound him?
Actually, actually, it's on a state contract.
Ah.
Again, we buy several pieces of equipment that are on state contract that allows us the opportunities to get any savings that those bids, they were bid through the state process.
Run their coattails, so to speak?
Yes.
Great.
All right, any questions? Any other questions for Rick? Thank you, Rick. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of Portion of an Alley from Caldwell Street to Norton Street Located Between South Ninth Street and Walter Chetan Boulevard, and Authorizes the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of Portion of an Alley from Caldwell Street to Norton Street Located Between South Ninth Street and Walter Chetan Boulevard, and Authorizes, Empowers, and Directs the Mayor to Execute a Quick Claim Deed From the City to the Property Owners in or Abutting the Public Way to be Closed.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this is a piece of public right-of-way that is in excess of what the city needs for its purposes. You have a block of property owners that are interested in closing that alley, of which has gone through the appropriate planning and zoning process, and it's here for your consideration this evening. You have several of these, and as they come up, you'll notice that we make sure that there are no utilities or anything like that, and we get signatures from all the utility companies, as well as this, my office, to make sure that we don't have any storm sewers or any interest in that property before we bring it to your attention.
And then, it becomes half to one property owner and half to another?
That is correct. Typically, when a public right-of-way is split, the center line of the road, if we use this microphone stand, is that will be a line that's drawn, and then, a piece of property goes to the adjacent property owner for the width of their property and so on and so forth. Sometimes, there's situations where one property owner has the interest of that, where the adjacent property owner does not, and then, you quickclaim that property to the one that wishes to have it. But, in this particular case, it appears that all of those properties are going to the adjacent property owners.
Okay. Any questions for Rick? All right. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky, for the Construction and Lease of a Customer Care Center to be Located Within the Paducah Commerce Park. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Mayor is hereby authorized to execute an interlocal agreement Between the City of Paducah and the County of McCracken, Kentucky, for the Design and Construction of a Customer Care Center Located Within the Paducah Commerce Park.
Second.
All right, City Manager, you wanted to talk about this?
Certainly. The City of Paducah, in partnership with McCracken County and Paducah Economic Development, has formally entered into an MOU to provide financial assistance to Teletext Services for the construction of an approximately 30,000-square-foot office building to host a call center. The City has committed to 1.35 million, McCracken County, the same amount, and Paducah Economic Development, 250,000. The City is coordinating the procurement of the building at present. We are in the evaluation stage of submitted proposals for the design and construction, and are hopeful of bringing a contract forward for the City Commission and Fiscal Court later this month, if not shortly thereafter. At this point in time, we would like to get the financing mechanism set up. And so, what this ordinance does is, through an interlocal agreement between the three parties, it essentially establishes the city as the project manager and the repository of funds from all three parties to be put into a project fund to be drawn upon, excuse me, for specific approved project payments. So, it's pretty much, the project account will be with the city. Disbursements to be approved by all parties. This agreement also recognizes the fact that the city is in the lead as project manager for the procurement process, which, by the way, is a process that involves representation from the other two parties as well as Teletext. So, I would answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? And this, this is one part of it. The other part is the downtown location?
Well, that'll be strictly between Paducah Economic Development and Teletext. This is the only one that the city will be a formal party to. I might mention one thing, a minor point, that the land- I might, uh, mention one thing, a minor point, that, uh, the, uh, the land under which the building will be built will be, um, leased to the city and county jointly under a 99-year lease rather than deeded over or sold to the city and county, which I think is, is acceptable for, uh, this sort of, uh, use.
We have the city manager's report now.
Thank you. I have a, a couple of, uh, reports tonight. Um, I think since Rick is at the podium already, we'll go ahead and start with him. This one's not, um, listed under my report, but I, I have asked, uh, are you, you have just a few minutes, guys? Okay, all right. I have asked Rick to give you an update on the, um, status of the implementation phases of the riverfront project. Uh, as you noticed in, uh, some information that went out last week, we're looking at a, a bidding on the boat ramp and launch, uh, later this month. So it's very timely that, um, Rick come before you and show you a, a timeline for that component of, of the project implementation and other significant stages that lie ahead of that.
Mayor Commission, um, I've got a, a overall plan sheet, uh, that's up on the board here that represents the boat launch project, whereas, uh, this was, is North Eighth Street. As you head up the page, you would be heading toward the Brookport Bridge. Uh, this is Burnett Street, uh, from Eighth over to Sixth Street where the flood wall is. This is where we just recently completed, oh, excuse me, right here. We just recently completed the, uh, the trail that goes through this area right here. Uh, this project encompasses rebuilding two blocks of, uh, Burnett Street from Eighth Street to Sixth Street, whereas we'll put curb and gutter and make improvements in there to provide for a, a nice entryway into the boat launch, um, toward, uh, the Ohio River. This is Sixth Street. Well, we're actually going to do a little bit of realigning of that so as we create an intersection, uh, where our, uh, uh, trail is actually crossing at a crosswalk of an intersection for that. So we'll have a controlled, uh, stop location where this, this will become a four-way stop at this location. Uh, the, well, let me go back to that. The road will actually, uh, go about 725 feet toward the river where we anticipate building 105, uh, parking stalls for, uh, truck trailer combinations on that. This is what's currently out for bid right now, uh, and we're going to build a five-lane boat launch in lieu of having four boat ramps at the, at the Paducah Riverfront. We're going to have one wide, uh, boat launch here that meets all the guidelines of Kentucky Fish and Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services for these, uh, kinds of, uh, facilities for that. Uh, this facility will go underwater, uh, on average, one and a half times per high-water season, just as your riverfront does right now. Uh, you know, when we close the riverfront, we have to put the barricades up sometimes so you can't go down to the lower roads. This pro, this project will be no different than that. Uh, and this is a project that's currently out for bids of which we have FHWA monies for, uh, and then once we receive those bids, we will have a better, I guess, idea of what, uh, we will have as far as, uh, coming up on our budget, uh, in the 2014 budget cycle. This is an, another portion of the project, uh, that I guess has received a lot of attention. I'm showing you a, I guess, an overall, uh, picture of the project without, uh, necessarily a marina out here per se yet. This portion of the project is using HUD funding to put the fill, what we refer to as the mass fill-in for this portion here and also these guide poles for our gangway. Again, there will not be any gangway, uh, built, uh, per se in this first round. The reason for that is we have to get the poles in, in order to put the fill around them and then as we come into our next, uh, pot of money, that's what will come in and build that. So, uh, that gives you some, uh, some better idea of this fill area that we have to put in and these poles that will need to be put in before the fill can be put, placed around them. Initially, uh, on this portion of the project, the public will not see any improvements as far as gangways or platforms, floating platforms. All they'll see is, uh, 12 poles with the fill that will go in. That fill will have to reside there anywhere from 12, uh, nine to 12 months for natural settling to go on because when you put this mass fill on a, on a mud river bottom, naturally it's going to settle and that needs to take place before you make any improvements, uh, higher up. This just represents the actual contract itself, a plan sheet where you can see the order magnitude of the mass fill that's going in. This line here, I don't know if you can see it, but everything, uh, outside of that line is, is actually underwater where everything above that line will be above the water. This is representing where those poles will be placed in there. And then this is talking about, uh, I'm, I'm, again, I apologize for the viewing public, but this is our, our pots of money, uh, that we're talking about where this represents a HUD grant order magnitude around 2.97 million to take care of this fill and those poles to go in. This green, uh, shaded area here represents an FHWA, uh, grant, uh, order magnitude around 3.9 million. That will come later on. Remember I said about the 12-month period for the settling to go on? This project will not take place or spending these monies will not take place until after a 12, after this project here has been complete. Now, let me go back to this. We have until September 30th to complete this project or we'll, uh, lose this HUD money. So actually, we're racing against the clock now, uh, for getting that fill put in there and then the next, the next press is going to be on this FHWA money as well. This blue, uh, represents actually going in, uh, with your, um, big grant, uh, big being boating infrastructure grant where you'll, uh, come in behind this project and actually build some, uh, you'll build the Marina Service Building, uh, you'll build, um, let's see, the gas pumps and those things for supporting transient boats coming through there. That's what the boating infrastructure grant's purpose is, is to support the needs of transient boaters. Uh, so basically, that's going to take you into 2015, 2016's budget cycle, but this is the immediate need that we'll be working on this summer of which will be this mass fill.
Any questions? The FHWA, the green box, does it have a time on it when it, when that?
Actually, Commissioner Rhodes, they would like to see some spending on that because what they'll, with the state of the federal, uh, I guess, deficit at this time, these monies that have been out there for a long time, the, uh, I would refer to as the federal, I guess, um, purse keepers of the federal money or saying, that money's been in Paducah for five years, yet it's not been spent. So obviously, they have some problems, so they want to pull it back to apply it to other projects and right now, we're ready, we're ready to go with that. Uh, and it's taken us, again, uh, we don't want to go through the whole, uh, I guess, muscle ordeal, but it's taken us six years to get to this point, uh, to spend these monies. Unfortunately, the city of Paducah got, uh, several small purses of money regulated by several agencies, which made this project even more difficult to handle because now you have to make portions of the project fit the monies because, uh, even though there are, it's a federal dollar, they instruct us, do not mix contracts with purses. So you have to make your federal purse match your contract size and that's very, very difficult to do, especially to make sense to somebody that's looking at projects and, well, that's, that's incomplete. You know, we know it's incomplete because that's as far as the money would take us and then we get into the next purse of money and it goes back into a bid cycle, too. Every one of these re, require, uh, a lengthy bid cycle.
No questions.
I'd love to turn this thing off.
City manager, have anything to say?
Thank you. Um, are there any questions on, for Rick?
Will we be getting, I mean, something to study on this, I presume?
The next thing, Rick, we'll be taking bids on the boat launch portion of the project, which will need to come back before you for action.
Do we get a package on this to?
We can, we'll get you the same package that was on the screen tonight.
Right.
Um, about a year and a half ago, um, I started meeting with the police and fire administrations about spatial issues in those two departments. Uh, found out at the time that there had been appropriations in place in both departments for a few years for some spatial needs analysis, so there was some money to, um, begin looking into that and in fact, uh, uh, that process was begun. Chief Kyle and Assistant Chief Barnhill, I believe, were last before you six, seven months ago to talk a little bit about some, some spatial needs assessment that they were, um, going to have developed for them. Um, they have, uh, attained that and have some more information than, as a result of that, that could be used to begin to develop some, some, uh, concepts for a, a potential, uh, joint facility that might give some, um, shed some light on the size of a footprint, uh, what, what kind of shared space, uh, possibilities might there be and, and so on and so forth. So, um, they didn't spend a lot of that money, retained most of it for, uh, a, a subsequent stage of analysis here, so Chief Kyle is here tonight to visit with you all about that.
Thank you, city manager, and, and that was, uh, a, a good intro. We're, we're just kind of keeping you all up to date with where we are and what the next step is going to be and kind of what our plan is. Um, we're, we believe we're ready for the next step. We did an initial analysis, uh, for spatial needs and now we're looking to expand upon that, uh, go in greater depth to help determine what our course, what the course is of our future actions, going to build on the analysis that we currently have. And then, uh, some of the things we're looking for out of this is to have some comparative images of, of similar projects and, and trends that are going on out there for these types of facilities. Uh, there, there are a lot of these facilities around the country and, and architectural design groups that are, that are doing this. They're just solely focusing on this kind, this kind of thing that will allow us to, uh, hopefully maximize our ability to operate shared space. And then additionally, they, they have some opportunities maybe to, because they're so fluent in it, to also steer us towards some funding sources as well. Uh, we know of a lot of them that are out there and of course, a lot of grant funding's drying up, but we'll draw upon the knowledge that they have to help us make sure that we haven't missed anything. Just some examples of what we're hoping to accomplish with this, uh, request for qualifications with the group that we picked to expand on. These are just some examples of where we know we could share some space that we hope would have, you know, would share money for us, um, or keep us from having to duplicate these things in the event we had two separate facilities. So just some examples of where, uh, some shared space might materialize for us. And then some of the meat and potatoes of really what we're hoping to gain from this, um, appropriate surrounding land use. How are we going to, uh, cohabitate with our neighbors? You know, considerations that we'll need to have in place for wherever we design, decide to build the structure. Uh, we won't, we will want to look at the site size, ease of expansion if needed, uh, vehicular access and pedestrian and public transportation. You know, it's going to be a lot of vehicles coming and going. Police department has a lot of officers, uh, fire trucks are quite large, you know, you're going to have to have plenty of space for vehicles and you need a plan for that, uh, of getting in and out of the site so that we don't create a traffic hazard by trying to access our location. Uh, proximity potential hazards, you know, we don't want to be backed up to the railroad because a lot of hazardous materials are transported along the railroad. We wouldn't want our public safety facility right there like that. And helping us identify those types of things to stay away from and then just making sure the adequacy of the infrastructure. Uh, I don't believe that's an area that we're going to have a problem with, but they help, uh, make sure that we don't lose focus of those things and, and happen to leave something One of the other things we'd like to gain from this is some type of, uh, artist rendering for what this building might look like. Uh, this is just a, a picture that we, that we put in here for, uh, purposes of discussing this, but, uh, ideally, we think we'd have something from a, a, a ground view, looking at the structure from the street level to give us an idea of maybe what kind of building we're talking about, what kind of size, something of that nature. Of course, you know, there's going to be some factors that play into that, like, uh, what size of site we're going to have or maybe what size of site we're going to need. They're going to impact that whether we are able to spread out or we're going to have to go up in terms of the size of the facility. And then in summary, you know, we, we want a detailed space by space definition of required elements we're going to have to have and that's, that's taking that spatial needs analysis that we had and, and really locking that down to what we need. Uh, information on how footprint will impact the site and what those needs are going to be. The police and fire requirements applicable to a joint facility in terms, you know, the police department has to have certain things for a facility that they need out of it. Fire department's the same way and then there is space that we can share, you know, and realizing all those things, making sure we haven't left anything out so that we've got a good, uh, path going forward to getting a, a, a good proposal out there. The site selection criteria that I, that I mentioned earlier and then the artist rendering. So, and, and not lastly, but probably the most important thing is the cost estimate. You know, some kind of estimate on what we're looking at in terms of, uh, total cost for the project, uh, that would, that would include, you know, potentially what, uh, land acquisition might have to be in the building itself. So we just wanted to give you an update kind of where we are, where we're planning to go. We're going to send this request for qualifications out to pick a group to help us identify all of these things that we've talked about so that we can, uh, refine our proposal and take the next step. And all of this work that we're talking about doing is working within the budgeted framework that we've already had. The city manager mentioned that we had money allocated a few years ago. We've got money left to do that and working within that framework. I'll leave anything else, city manager?
I think you covered it pretty well.
Do you have any questions about where we are? It's just really an update and kind of where we're going next.
And this would replace the police department on Broadway.
That's correct.
The facility downtown.
Yes.
Fire department.
Yes, Station 1 is, we, we would be looking to collapse Station 1 and the police department headquarters together.
I think it's important, especially for the press, when you look at the title on there, it says design, but the next word is concept. It's a design concept. It's a very, very preliminary that really intended to give us a broader information base to make potential decisions about going forward or not.
Any, any other questions for Steve? All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Any commissioners' comments tonight?
I do. I have, uh, Mark, could you come up, please? Um, the dog park. I've had some, some neighbors enjoying our new dog park. Uh, however, there's, uh, there's been some issues with, uh, with dogs, uh, misbehaving. So the question that was put to me, I hope you're watching, Louis, that, uh, how frequently, uh, does our, I guess it would be park ranger, uh, are they out there trying to make sure that?
Depends on what time of day.
Yeah, I mean, do we have an idea of, of when the, the highest traffic is out there? I mean, do you have an idea?
Highest traffic is typically, uh, is the late afternoon.
Right.
Is that four o'clock to six o'clock timeframe, six, seven o'clock timeframe? And our rangers do make their tours around there regularly. At that point, we typically have two on, on duty and they were, are looking and checking those, so.
So if there's a dog that's misbehaving, would, it's some kind of?
Best thing to do, if somebody, again, there's, with, within our.
Best thing to do, somebody, again, there's, with, within our rules, it's a lot self-policing. You hope that the folks can talk to each other and make rational decisions, that the dog that is misbehaving leaves. That's what you really hope for, and 99% of the time, that probably happens. If they don't, that's when a 911 call is. And 911 is more than just the rangers, because, I mean, at that point, so.
Most, most folks treat their dog like their kids.
Correct.
And most folks would love to believe that their kid doesn't do anything wrong. So you have that, you have that component out there.
Certainly.
The dog is bullying my dog. Well, monster doesn't do that. So now you got, you have a situation.
Yeah.
And that's what happened, that's what happened with this, this one lady, and that's what she said happened.
Right.
And so she goes, well, I'm, I'm not taking my dog back out there, because there's no one there to, to make sure that people behave. So I said, well, I'm pretty sure we have park rangers that come around. I'm not exactly sure what, when they're around, what their routes are, what their time is when they're out there. But I know when we put this, we put this together, that was one of the things that, that we talked about, could happen.
Certainly.
You know, and we have things in place to handle that. But it, it sounds like it's, it's on an honor system here.
A, a lot of it is, and in most dog parks, that's the way it is. Now, if they can catch the ranger as the ranger's coming by, you know, at that point, they're still over at Noble Park with the activities that are going on over there. In fact, they, they travel from east to west, from Bob Coleman Park, and check those facilities out at the same time, so they're in rotation.
Have we had many complaints?
In my office, really no. We've had a couple here and there, a couple that have hit Facebook. We've tried to answer any questions that they have, and most of the time, it's been, everything's been a positive. Right now, in fact, we're trying to work on, because right where it's been wet and where they're parking is getting rutted. That's the only complaint we've really received, at least nothing in my office.
And when, when you take your dog in there, you're supposed to have them on a leash when you let them into the dog park, so you should have that leash with you. And if your dog starts misbehaving, you should have control of that dog and put it back on the leash.
That's what, that's what the, in, in the large dog park and in the small dog park, we have the two little stationary pens, that basically, if you don't, that's where you separate the dogs. You get them in separate pens, so, and under the control of the, and it does say in the rules that the owner is supposed to maintain the leash on their person, and then be able to get their dog and put them into there, and that at least separate, gets them opportunity to separate the dogs.
Okay.
And that's why we have those enclosures. We've got a single one over on the smaller side, because frankly, we haven't gotten any complaints on the smaller side.
Okay, so, so my correspondence with Louise would be, if, if there's a person out there with a dog that's misbehaving and they're not following dog park rules, then they should con, you should contact, well, she'll contact me.
The first call, I mean, if it's, if it's truly an issue, then that people are belligerent or they're going back and forth, call, call dispatch, the 911, they'll either dispatch a ranger or they'll dispatch the police department.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the only alternative we have. Most likely, they'll go with the ranger first.
And I, that's what I was going to ask the question, they have, they can dispatch a ranger.
Yes, yes. Our rangers are on the range.
You're getting the impression that it's the dogs, not the people, right?
Right, right. No, it wasn't, it was a dog, but...
It's usually a combination.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a dog initially, but the, but the, apparently, the owner was, it, it wasn't my dog.
What are the hours of the rangers?
The rangers, we have actually one come in about one in the afternoon and start doing that. They are there until late at night, so.
So they should be close proximity?
We have between one and three rangers on it, from, from about one o'clock in the afternoon until after 11 o'clock at night. And, you know, there's nobody typically at the dog park after dark anyway, so there's somebody within proximity that they could make that call. The first call that I would think dispatch makes is not to the police department, but to a ranger to try to settle that down, at least any impasse, and try to work out an impasse.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comments? We have one. Del Vaughn, come on up. And I owe you an apology, because you did leave a message for me to call you, and I have not gotten back to you. I do apologize for that. So if you just want to give us your name and you can...
My name is Del Vaughn Bevanow. I just moved here about less than a year ago, and I did, like the mayor said, I met with her, and I've just been wanting to, excuse me, put a lead on some things about being out in the mall, because here lately, the teenagers, that's their hangout. And I don't normally go to the mall on Saturday, because, you know, being in military, excuse me, previously been in the military, I was in Iraq, and I got PTSD real bad, but this past Saturday, I was out there and I was just ashamed and embarrassed for parents and grandparents, because the young kids were out there just walking around, young men sagging pants, you know, underwear showing, shorts showing, and young girls just walking out around, just, as my old pastor would say, tight, come get me clothes on, and, you know, that's inappropriate in the mall, you know? And I have a 12-year-old daughter, she's in Georgia, but I would, I just wouldn't want to bring my daughter to the mall to see anything like that. And I'm sure everybody here maybe have kids or grandkids. And, I mean, you go to a public facility, just like, you know, you all were talking about beautifying the city, you know, Paducah is nice to me, I like it here. But at the same time, you know, I like standards, and, you know, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to help young men to prevent them from going maybe to juvenile homes or prison, because I grew up without my father, and so I've been trying to help. And I talked to one young man, asked him, do you know where that come from? He said, I don't even care. Just walked on about his business, sagging, you know, and, and I talked, when I talked to the mayor, I did some research. There's a young guy from New York, his name is, he's a rapper, Kim Sharpton. He said that he walked around for years, starting in the 90s, sagging his pants in the way he was walking, but coming to find out, he ended up, pardon my expression, ended up with ED, which is erectile dysfunction. And he had to go to the doctor to find that out. And see, a lot of the young kids, they don't understand and know that. And see, they think it's the norm to walk around and do things like that, but that's not normal, that's rebellion. And, and I think that them hanging out to the mall is discouraging a lot of the elderly couples to not want to be out there, because a lot of people like to go out there like myself, sit at Starbucks and drink some coffee, you know, and read, and I've interacted with a lot of older couples, and a pastor I talked with today, he said he had went to some rehab for his heart or something, and said, there was a young man there about in his 30s and 40s, said he was sagging, said he didn't even have underwear on. I mean, to me, that's embarrassing. I mean, I wouldn't want my father, you know, even though he's deceased, if he was living, I wouldn't want my father to say he's experienced something like that. You know, so, I mean, and then the mall, their, their kids going out there just doing even worse things that you guys can even imagine. I've heard some things that I wasn't even asking about. Young girls being caught out there going down on young men out at the dumpsters.
I'm su, I'm sure this is probably something the police department is aware of. Have you all, I'm, I'm sure that they take care of the situation out there at the mall. And as far as things that you're talking about, Del Vaughn, it's almost you'd need to mention that to the mall management? Have you talked to them?
Well, yes, ma'am, people said they've talked to the mall management, but, I mean, the, the security guards out there, they only have so much leeway to do something. I mean, and, like I said, I've done my research, and I've, I've seen it on the news and internet that, you know, you got states where they've banned that, you know, you can't go in a public facility sagging pants, you know, wearing certain attire. I mean, so, I mean, are we going to allow the teenagers to control the streets or the mall, or somebody going to do something about it?
Are you referencing certain cities have past ordinances about...
Yeah, I mean, I can give you one, Dallas, Texas, you know, one of the football players, Dan Bryant, back in football season, he was kicked out the mall because he was sagging. Chicago, certain places, you know, you can't go to school wearing your pants. One young man got kicked off the airplane because he, he didn't want to pull his pants up.
Well, I do know that some of the schools, Richard, I know Clark School, they have a certain code, and if you come in and your pants are hanging down, they make you go in and put a...
Binder's line?
Yeah, yeah. So I know, I know the schools...
We're talking about no sag, no sag zones.
Right.
Possibly.
It's, it's the same at Oscar Cross.
Yeah.
No sagging allowed. There are big, big signs posted around the minute you hit the door. That's an after-school program, and, I mean, the minute you hit the door, not allowed.
And see, a lot of people don't understand as well, is that there's some young men that are in gangs that they're sagging, they have a gun strapped around their waist that you can't, you don't know about. A lot of that stuff, I mean, it's on the internet, I've did my research, and, like I said, I'm trying to bring this out to help, you know, prevent the problem, because there's this big old fight talking about concealed weapons all over the news, estate and everything, you know, and, but if a young man is walking around with his pants three sizes too big and he's sagging, you don't know if he got an Uzi down there, or a .38, or Smith &amp; Wesson. So if he, I mean, if they have to pull their pants up, then he can't walk through there like that, right around.
Well, Jeff, you've, I don't know how difficult that would be to enforce. I would think it'd be pretty difficult to enforce. It's, it goes back to parents and...
Well, yeah, I guess I'd, I'd never looked at the ordinances that are, that are out there. Certainly be happy to do that. Clearly, any city that's put anything on the books has had to address the enforcement part of it, so we could, you know, check it out.
Would that be a conversation possibly that you would have with the mall folks and talk about that being a...
Yeah, I think...
Sag zone type of...
Yeah, I think, I think I'd want to maybe do a little research and see what other cities have done.
Right.
Because they know that hook up with places or maybe target places where...
Right.
Youth maybe are prone to go. So I would think the research would take us in that direction. But again, I'm not necessarily saying I'm saying, I think it's a good or a bad idea, but I'm, I'm curious what you have said about other cities having ordinances. We could certainly take a look at what's out there.
I mean, you know, like I said, because, you know, Paducah is, is a center spot for a lot of people, you know, either going to Nashville or further, or you going to Illinois or St. Louis or further, so, you know, no one wants to come here and see that, especially the summertime. You know, kids just waiting for the summer to just start sagging, you know, wearing, young men wearing underwear, pair of shorts, another pair of shorts, you know?
Okay.
And so...
Well, thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention, we will look into it.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. We have an executive session tonight?
We do, yes.
Who has that?
I have that. I move that the board go to a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sailor acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.810-1B, and a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.810-1G.
Second. All right, and we will not be taking any action tonight, so, is that correct? Yep, are we?
I think it's possible on the, on one of the two items.
Okay, so we would be coming back out?
Yes.
All right. Possible.
Okay.
All right. Sure.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Second.
All in, or, city clerk, call the row.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I do. I move to authorize the city manager to begin the process of selling the Sheehan Bridge property as surplus property.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Well, I, I would like to say that this action, to me, does not mean that we are abandoning our desire to provide a sportsplex or of some kind in the future, it just means we do not have interest in building it on this property at this time.
I agree with that.
Well said.
Yes.
Well said. All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
All right.
Are we adjourned?
We're adjourned.